Remember someone in here evaluating. Stripped you down or your underwear and had your socks. As you walk around these. Looking at.
Okay. Call order. There is a. Here we are.
Trustee Bethel.
Here.
Trustee Winkleblatt.
Here.
Trustee Price.
Yes, sorry.
Steve Solley.
Yes.
Mayor Wilcox.
Yes.
Well, any, any changes or additions to the agenda?
Well, this mine I was supposed to be on the agenda. For the, your previous ministerate and. Wrote me a letter as told me about his agenda. Didn't share with. The current administration, so. I'm here or not. I would like to get this presented because uh. Looks good here and definitely you're excited to do it.
Okay, so person is not on the agenda. Please set my message comments to three minutes and add your address and comments directly to the mayor. Identify yourself. By name and address when making comments. The town. Board. Will make no decision or take. Action except to direct the town manager or. Town attorney. So. I guess mark your first up on the list for your three minutes if you want to stand up and.
Or I could take my three minutes, we could like change it into a.
Agenda item?
Agenda item.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't a part of the.
It was part of what I think you. I would, I have somebody minded with this, I was doing it, I don't want to argue.
Not agreeing with anybody on this song because it was not moving.
But um. People gave us this, really wanted to look at.
Well, well, we can't hear it's.
You can't make decisions.
Right, we can't make a decision, we can listen to you, we can't make a decision, I would. Post it in. Uh, a twenty-four hour period.
Ah, it's twenty-four hours, okay, I'll go along with that.
Okay.
That's sound good.
Yeah, I meant to send that to you. We're not, this is almost the same exact one I sent. Two thousand and sixteen. With the board. Like the, the, the header, that's what it says, document's communication about, about that. Um, so anyway. Uh. I proposed providing internet service to. Uh. The town of Colburn, town hall site here. To the uh, public works building across the street and to the uh, new audit uh. Rebuilt. Um auditorium. Uh, right on here, uh, three, three hundred meg service which is what we currently provide on our fiber, two hundred meg up and down symmetric. Um. And uh. I also have a post-up app on here also for uh, voice service or host's voice. Um, I do this sort of thing for several different companies, including the URA school district and doing URA school district. Thirteen years, I believe. Um. So we, we charged a hundred. Like I had, I had, well, my, my charge of URA school, we charged them a hundred bucks a month for the server. And then uh, eighty dollars for the trunk lines. Um. And then uh, that's under one of those long debts since the fourteenth state. Um, but it'd be a hundred and eighty dollars for uh. Voice services, um, that's for D I D, P D I D, they don't have much, you know, more, we'll do more. Well, it was like it was a school, we didn't actually use that many D I Ds. Which for. You're not helping people, that, that, the direct telephone number, like if I wanted to call. Dusty, I could dial a separate number and bring this to her desk. And let's see. Um, and then two, two hundred fifty for internet for all three locations. Uh, that pretty much falls right in line with what we've charged everybody else other businesses. Um, probably just that, not, we're kind of throwing in the uh, uh, forum. We've charged a little bit more than that for. Through business locations. Um. And installation of these two hundred fifty for each site, it's like one time fee for host's voice servers, three hundred. Um. We also propose providing. Service to the water plant and sewer plant, uh. We could hook up fixed wireless internet uh, to those two sites. And get them up and running and uh, you can do cameras if you need to, like down the sewage plant or whatever. Um, we can drop a phone on these sites uh. Where we need, uh, price doesn't include the hardware because it, that's kind of whatever you want to go there. But basically any IP phone, internet phone will work with the system. Um. So it's what we've been running for a year, you know, well over two decades, I guess.
Can, can you explain the, the redundancy and the benefit of? The, the C N L and the, the mid mile as to how it would help if, you know, the weather goes down or radio. Takes down.
Or if an airport goes bad.
What's that?
Or if an airport goes bad.
Right, or anything that port goes bad.
Okay, um, well, the uh. If when we ever get the C N L working, um. Just if you guys all copy it, I just. Found my copy uh. Last weekend, it was being on my home office. And I had the uh, the packet that they gave us to come down here. So that we're gonna have internet for C N L June twenty twenty-two. Three years ago, I know that we were supposed to have it at December before. Let's turn it happened. And we still have, but anyway, the redundancy, um. We all know the fiber gets broken, especially, and I think this could be more prominent in this farming community where people are burning uh. Ditches and things like that. Put out. Really poor clothes nights, so you walk without, um, that's why I was. Kind of disappointed when I found out they wanted to trench it in on V road, and I proposed. That we bring an aerial on uh. The cutoff and that we also could provide the services and. Was paid for not by the people of Colburn, but by the people of the United States and. Um, because there are more. You know, the population by going to that, but that's a different topic. But yeah, so can we, you know, wherever we come, in fact, we had fiber break this year, Thanksgiving. The damp Thanksgiving, uh, water got in the line from the conduit and just had a little bit of drip, so literally. Like. An inch. And lots of fiber because it had enough. For. To spread that conduit or affect the fiber inside the conduit within that line. So anything's possible. So you'll have a redundancy, we're gonna maintain our radio system. As long as we can, as long as it makes sense, so we have redundant ground, eight fiber bricks. So, um, and we also. Come in directly from uh, Merle Lynch building in Grand Junction, where the uh. Um. The fiber will come in from the city hall. Somehow get on, you know, to the back. Running around over here. There's one pathway, and we go here. Just down the alleyway there, and we should go where we uh, the big flat of the city. Uh, nine one one tower, and then we shoot up on top of Grand Bay, so then we go across back down into the Merle Lynch building, so. Could just be different paths.
But once, I guess my point is, once the C N L and the fiber is up and working, if the radio goes down for weather or whatever.
Oh yeah, we haven't just been an issue last week.
Then, then fiber would have taken over and there would have been no downtime.
Exactly, nobody would have known I had a problem, I wouldn't have had to be up there.
Right.
Six hours.
Okay.
I would have been out there in a day instead.
That, that answers my question.
I didn't realize that was the way you're going, yeah, take away around the fiber rates.
Right.
We have a system still.
Right.
Run on.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Next, you have Tilda Evans.
I'd like to reserve my comments for the agenda items listed at that time, thanks.
Well. Not really when they're on the agenda, but they'll uh. The rest of the board okay with that? Yeah. That's fine, so.
Should have that.
Onward and forward. Approval of Resolution eleven series of twenty twenty-five, a resolution with the Board of Trustees of the town of Colburn, Colorado, approving an agreement between Bruce Smith Consulting, Inc. For professional services. We're open for. Discussion.
I'd like to start the discussion with, uh, I'd like to reiterate that I think we're doing. Uh, trustee Bethel installing disservice by not giving him the opportunity that the other of us had. To see the applicants who, for this position at the time that we hired this spring, we had two other quite. Qualified applicants, we saw their resume and we cleared their references, we have not seen a resume, nor do we have any references. Uh, for Mr. Smith, so I just want to make that comment that I think it's a disservice that you don't have the opportunity. To see other applicants as well, they should be considered not just one individual.
Okay.
And I have several lives, I'd like to go through this as we all probably do to discuss this resolution, first of all, I'd like to know. Who wrote this, who wrote this resolution, did our. Attorney, right, that's resolving, or have you seen him? He is still our attorney, he turned June.
Right, and he said that he would help us out through June. So. But the, the, the main thing, uh. And Bruce spoke of his resume before, at, at the last meeting.
One thing. I'm talking about a physical resume, something.
I know what's, I know what you're talking about, one thing that I would like to add that when Bruce did leave, that we had over a million dollars in the coffers so that in case something. Happened, emergency wise. There was plenty of money there to take care of that. Um, we all have different perspectives and whether it's the town of Colburn or whether it's. Washington DC, so uh. At any rate. Uh.
So did Arkdon attorney see this?
Do you know, that's different?
No. Okay, so let it be known that town attorney did not see this resolution.
Okay.
I'd like to move on uh. To the second whereas. Um. Well, actually, it's the, we'll go to the whereas. The third one, fourth one? Okay, now in. Where are, where are we here, the second whereas. Do you want to follow it? Okay. There was a statement that. Uh, I'm gonna. I'm losing the oxygen. Okay, I'm sorry. Somebody else has something I know, pull it up, whatever.
I just wanted to make it clear that we do have two applicants. And they're still in the running for the permanent position, and welcome to apply, and Bruce is one, and welcome to. Advises on them and their qualifications.
And that's, that's, that's the main thing of asking Bruce to, to come on with this is so that we get, he, he's got more experience. In this area than. Anybody we've talked to or. Or had in the interim, uh. In the last three months, so he's, he's not looking to be permanent, but he's. Looking to give us some. Wisdom and a perspective so we can get somebody that. Will stay uh.
Thank you.
For a longer. For a longer period of time and. Give us direction as to how they want to go.
You know, if you should say that, because you know, I worked for the school district for thirty-seven years. And I retired in twenty fourteen. Started out as a school district for twelve years, Bruce, as I remember, left us in two thousand and six. So I, I think in terms of the statement of being an expert in the town of Colburn, uh, you've been gone for nineteen years, that doesn't exactly, in my opinion. Make a qualification as an expert. Way, let me go back and thank you for providing this one week. Um, on the, on the second where, let me back up a little bit, on the second whereas, town government in many ways lost continuity during the last several. Years and desires to reset itself financially and philosophically. Now, I believe that this should be taken off. Believe that it doesn't represent my point of view, and I think it's offensive to the employees and the trustees that have served during the last several years. And so I suggest that, and who's to say that town government has lost continuity? I strike, I think we should take that second statement out of there, that second whereas, I, I find it offensive, and I think it's offensive to the employees. And the trustees that worked during that time.
Well, during, during the employment of our last interim, that's. She may have used different words, but that's exactly what was said, and uh, the main thing is that we need to. Support our existing style. And we know that Dusty wants to stay long term. And uh. Mike, um, I, I appreciate Melanie. Park coming in. She, you had mentioned, but she doesn't have access to, I mean, anybody has access to the budget that gets on the town. Website. But as far as moving funds around or anything like that. She doesn't, so I know that was a concern of yours. Um.
All financial records are public um, record.
Correct.
Well. It's my understanding. That we're just hiring Brutus. As a ten to help town. Get back into financial and diplomatic way. But it's like, with the right people. You know, I mean, it's not, and he knows. It been in that position long enough. That. He knows the right people, he knows how to go about finding the right people, and that's what we need. So, okay.
Yes, that was a great working knowledge of our. Everything. Of our utilities, of our water rights, of. Things that have not.
Intake.
Yeah.
And it goes right back to, I, I forget the name Bruce, but you, uh, you went before the, the state senate and spoke with him, but he's. The water plant, the sewer plant, all of that stuff. He is familiar with and can get, and can communicate. With Mike in a direction, Mike and Kurt, which we're lucky to have. Uh. In the direction that we need to go to and basically. Educate us as to. How to move forward and when it comes time, which may be sooner than we want, but to replace the sewer plant. And that's be, because that's not gonna be just a. A quick deal. So. For, for me, it's more of not. It, it. It's more for an education and. Anytime you have somebody with that kind of experience. You're, well, A, we're lucky to have them in the community and we don't have to have them on Zoom, um. So. And, and that's just my, my perspective. I, I have worked with him before on board in the past, and so he's a no-nonsense kind of guy. If he has something to say and he thinks you're full of it, he'll tell you so, and if he, if you. Think he's, you know, wrong or wants something and you, and you say something, he's not gonna take you personal or, you know, at the end of the day. You, you can, you know. Basically, the light bulb turned on for me several times, not knowing. You know. How to go what direction or whatever, so. That's what I appreciate.
Well, I just want to back up what you said. I worked with Bruce when I was on the board and when I was mayor, and he needed something done, Bruce got it done. And he would bring ideas to the town. But the board made the decision rather to follow through on those ideas or not. But if you want somebody to get things done, you need Bruce.
Ju- just like an attorney, he will make a recommendation. As I think this is the, the way you need to go, but whether you go that direction. Is up to the board as a collective. Uh, and that's. Yeah. Okay.
I motion we approve, excuse me, I would like to talk on this subject, yeah, after the motion and the second, there's, there's a discussion for.
I have some more numbers before we move on. All right. I was waiting.
Some positives.
Right. When, when we get the agreement for professional services. Section three. Town shall indemnify the fifth consultant as it would an employee under the officer of the town. Town shall not, under any circumstance, sue consultant or any person affiliated with consultant. Any event that town files a suit against consultant or any person associated with the consultant, the town shall immediately pay consultant or the associated person not refundable, not. The sum of fifty thousand dollars. Now, is there something that says that we uh. Can sue you, saying we can't sue you, is there anything that says you can't sue us? I don't know, that seems like a one-way street here.
Go ahead.
One, people didn't be talking to you while you're having the meeting, you, the conversation is not open, it's open to you, you invited me to speak so. First, for the record. I didn't come looking for this job. Number two. When you have an agreement, a draft agreement in front of you. You certainly should discuss among yourself. Uh, things that you. Would like to see amended out of it. And you know, like uh. Gary found one item that. I thought that you would react. A lot more strongly, but Gary found that right off, but at any rate. The, your role as the board. Um. You know, if you generally want to do that, that's one thing, then you need to get the agreement to. Go inside with the things you want to accomplish. Someone cares, so. I put that in there, I wanted, I want you to talk. I want you to talk to them. If that's not acceptable, if you want to cross that out. I. They uh, say. Uh, the second sentence or whatever, there's a lot of the.
I mean, have you sued him or what?
I want you to talk about it, I want you to think about it, because that's good, and so Gary took his job, and so is that a two-way street? I'd say if that's put in the way that you mind, I think, I don't know why you would have that language in there, I. Had it in there to get your attention, to try to get you thinking, try to get you doing your job.
I love that.
Something I would. I, 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 I didn't scratch my head, I wonder if that's even legal. I don't think I am. But I. Yeah, so you know, if you don't want to agree to that, you want to say. I live at this side would be the lady and Smith, the Micah, and Nadios. I mean, that, that we won't have an agreement, and that's, well, that's. It's very, it's very easy to do your job. And you did.
Well, I think.
I would never agree to that, and I would tell you, if I was working for you, I would tell you. Do not agree to that, that's assuming that you, that you're crystal ball. And see everything into the future, God knows. You know, the good guy today may be out of town in the morning, uh, so you know, you, then we can. I would, I would, I would take, I didn't mean to offend you, I meant to, I started saying take offense with it, but. Not offense, profession, that language should not be in there.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, uh. Um, I want you to know that. I have always. My philosophy has always been. That the board has the right to replace the manager. Period, and. Without cause and. All that, I mean, so for whatever reason, you know, you don't like the way the, the manager goes and sees your hair, and. Adios. I mean, it's almost gotta be like that. Uh, it just, things just can't work.
I'd like to address section four, if you're finished, Bruce. Also. I tell you, I don't mean to interrupt, are you saying, okay? Um, section four, I think seven hundred and fifty dollars a month is extravagant. Uh, expenses shall be reversed for consultant for maintaining home or office. Um. Internet, Starlink. Well, I, I, I know about what that would cost, a computer, I, I guess if you don't have one, the town could provide a computer. Travel, I know I get paid by the government when I do some traveling, I know what's a reasonable amount for traveling, but seven hundred and fifty dollars a month. I just think that's way too extravagant, and I would suggest that there just be a, a uh. A list that provided and then we, we cover those expenses that are justified. But I think seven hundred and fifty dollars a month that we're going to go for six months, that's a great deal of money for expenses I can't, I can't see justified.
So, and, and itemized list of what that seven hundred, or, you know, whatever it comes up to, one month it might be four hundred dollars and another month it might be. Seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Well, it doesn't state that way, it says that we'll pay, it first date every month that we'll pay the sum of seven hundred and fifty dollars for expenses. It doesn't say it's an itemized list, expensive.
And that, you know, like Bruce said, in, in section three, we can, i- if. We make a motion to move forward with this, we can, in that motion, strike section three, amend section four. So that those expenses are, are itemized so that we can see. Just like our monthly bills. What those expenses are, which is what I think you're asking for instead of a flat fee.
I mean, because when I look at section B, I mean, you did say that the consultant should work primarily through the town hall. At the town's facilities rather than his own office, except as approved by the mayor and the board of trustees, so I, I just felt that a lot of those expenses, we have computers, we have everything else like that. I think was most reasonable, my leader, things of that nature, although, I don't know if anybody else is paid for them, why they should come to work, but. At any rate, that's, that, I thought there was a contradiction in A and B, if we're expecting Bruce to come here for the majority of the time.
Well, and that's a, you know. Part of the contract with, with the last interim or, or temp manager was. And my bad, my mistake, but I assumed that when we had the interview. That that person would be in the office and available four days a week, and that didn't happen throughout the whole term. So. Uh.
Bruce does believe strongly in coming to work. Which is nice. But. I just told Gary that you believed in coming to work, to the office, but I mean, I understand where he's coming from, you know, I've printed. But I mean, I understand where he's coming from. You know, I've printed board packets over the last ten years. I've printed the municipal code. I've printed, I, I've got the money and printers, equipment and paper since I've been on the board. So I mean, to have the freedom to print stuff at home and I'm just excited to have Bruce on that I'm willing to agree to this contract and keep rolling.
There any amendments that you want, want to make to your motion? Do you want to strike? I mean, it, it's obvious that, it sounds to me like Gary would like to strike uh, section, section three.
I, I would just like to ask Bruce if we strike or amend anything, if he's still gonna come on, because we need Bruce.
That's not what you meant. I'm not gonna look for you to agree.
I am.
I want you, I want to help you, but I'm not gonna do it for free. And I'm not gonna enter into an agreement that I know is gonna end up in trouble. And I'll tell you what, expenses will do it every time. By the way, that's seven hundred and fifty dollar amount, that's the same amount in my contract from nineteen ninety-five. Okay. And the reason that we do that, they're discussing things, not you, Mark. And so the rea- the reason that that's in there is that I have seen over the years, I've seen it in trouble, even with police. Where people have to turn in expense accounts and they turn in items on the expense account. And the next thing you know, you're in the big fight over a hundred dollar bill from a restaurant in Denver. You didn't need to go to that fancy a place. You could have gone to a less expensive one. The way to solve that problem is they have a blanket amount of money. And then there's no, there's never any discussion about that. It doesn't matter.
Okay.
I have been a consultant for over thirty years. I would like to say the same thing. I would say paying them seven fifty, so, and I would, if I would say, why would I minimize it? He's got very things to do.
Okay.
Well, I'd sleep with that. And me as a consultant, I wouldn't I, the mileage to travel from Grand Central to wherever I'm here as a consultant, that is an option.
So what about section three? Do you want us to edit that or do you want, or would you still be willing to come on if we strike it?
What if, I'm sorry?
That's the fifty thousand dollars, the consultant.
Did your job. You should do that. You should, somebody should make a motion.
You will.
Gary made a motion and he said, I didn't know the way that, no. Doesn't hurt my thing.
You'll come on board.
Such a good comment, sir.
I was thinking, yeah, you need a new party or something like that.
I, I would take when you agree that you anticipate it's gonna end up important.
So Bruce, did you say on section seven that, uh, the review and evaluation of financial condition of the town, including but not limited to preparation of the twenty twenty-four audit, are you prepared to do the preparation?
No, I'm not. I um, the, the audit needs to be done. I'm not sure why it's so long, should have been finished by now, but so maybe the, our staff had do that. There's a lot of reasons that might not have been done in the time they measured, but that audit needs to be done. In the absence of that audit, uh, this is pretty hard. I can't make any definitive statement. I don't know what the financial situation of the town was in January. Um, I'll just do it right now while I was going to talk to you about this later. The, the quick and dirty review based on the twenty-three audit, I don't I think the town's in pretty good financial I didn't have any you know, that's a, like I said, quick and dirty. That's had, uh, fund balances, positive fund balances in every font.
I think we said, when was that preparation wording?
You're gonna make sure that the twenty twenty-four budget is filed with the, or everything's turned in, oversee that or?
Yeah, I'm, we're off the boat to make this thing go. The deadline is August one. It's not a drop dead deadline. But it's a drop dead deadline that, uh, you know, that's a serious, very precarious, you know, I stayed off for uh, routinely arrangements, extensions on, so let me make sure you go almost to the first of June. I don't have one minute of time for it.
Yes, we did request an extension.
The audit did, the, if the books are in good shape, the audit, uh, they're only be here for three or four days, maybe in that. And then that will want another three weeks to a month. Physically put everything together. So they, if the books have been close the way they need them, but the audit can be, uh, recruited. Uh, maybe even before all this, but anyway, this is a essential document.
You are, you are going to review and evaluate the financial condition included, but not limited to the preparation of the twenty twenty-four audit? Item B. Item B, review and evaluate the financial condition of the town, including but not limited to the preparation of the twenty twenty-four audit?
Uh, I need the, I need the real audit, I need the completed audit to be able to
Okay.
the financial position of the town.
Okay. Okay. All right.
This agreement is drafted and it's by me.
Okay.
Don't blame Dusty.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not.
And I, she's a professional, she's done this kind of
Yeah.
So
I'm not, I'm not blaming anybody. I was just
You don't need to blame anybody.
I was just clarifying what item B was. So that needs to stay. Anything else, Gary?
You talking about the item B?
Yeah.
As worded?
Yeah.
No, but I think the preparation, that's not, that's not Bruce's expertise, preparation of the, of the audit? Let me get to the preparation of the audit?
Well, yes and no, Gary. The staff does not prepare the audit, the independent auditor, that's required by law and that's just good accounting. But in order to get the books together, ready for an audit, uh, there's a lot that needs to be done. And all we're saying is that, um, our system, um, I'm sure that it gets done. Let's put it that way.
That's good.
But, you know, let's just do it. This, I wouldn't expect Dusty to be a, an audit professional. I wouldn't she's maybe has had some experience with various parts of it, but she's never probably been the one to pull all, pull everything together to hand it off to the audit. Maybe she has, maybe I'm, you done that? Okay. Unlucky you, just can't. Yeah, so we aim the book is what it is.
Yeah. And you haven't done, you haven't done it for a while. I mean, so, so we don't we don't want to limit, limit what Bruce can or can't do. So that's fine.
I think the, yeah, the explanation pretty much takes care of itself so that Dusty gets the support that she needs and Bruce has done it in the, in the past, so um, and to make sure, yeah, the wastewater treatment plant permit. Handing subdivisions to look those over. I mean, I, I know that, uh, I haven't talked to Andy, but I know he would have liked to broke ground a couple of years ago. So where that's standing, uh, whether it's between his planners or engineers or, or ours, I don't know, but uh, we need to, we need to support that as a, a local business person as well, so um, and then revi- review review and report on the, the, the town on water rights. And we just did get a a water attorney, but, uh, right off the bat, Bruce came up with the state statute and, and section, uh, about those things. And that's something that we can quickly look into and, and take care of and check it off and move on. The main, the main thing that we want to do is move forward and and be accountable and, um, make sure things are taken care of. So I would, I'm still open to a motion if you want to delete, uh, ac- accept the agreement and, and delete section C.
Three.
Or three, excuse me. Uh, number one. For whatever reason, I've got a bit of dry mouth this evening, but
I motion that we, um, approval of resolution eleven, series of twenty twenty-five, a resolution of the board of trustees of the town of Culver in Colorado approving an agreement with Bruce Smith Consulting, Inc. for professional services. And we would like to strike section three from the agreement for professional services.
I would second that. So we have a motion and a second? Now there's further discussion? No.
I am Tilda Evans. I live at three thousand one, um, Orchard Avenue in Culver. Um, I suggest that you vote against this resolution. I don't know why you would want to hire somebody who was fired for cause from this town and made their fourth.
You better get in the church. I'm not an officer of this town. I'm just a planner. I'm gonna make you pay.
He was never fired, Tilda.
Not, he was not reading. If you want, if you want to apologize and retract that statement, now's the time to do it.
Okay. I was misinformed. He was not fired, but he was not pre-hired for cause. And it's in the town's, um, records. And, um, you, you commented that he was, uh, when he left the town, had a million dollars in reserve. Well, our previous administrator, our, our previous town manager, when they left, we have four million dollars in reserve.
But, but how much of that was in grants instead of just?
If you have four million dollars in reserves, not including grants, look in your budget. Um,
And this is many years later.
Yes, it is many years later. They've done a good job. They did a good job of, um, protecting our town's funds and making sure that we've had funds in the rainy day. I believe that he failed to protect the town from being sued.
You should hire an attorney. You're gonna need one.
Please do.
Please do, I just I'm not gonna argue with you or anybody else in public.
Um,
You don't know, I have no right to slander people.
No. If I can make my, finish making my comment.
From the west side.
You want somebody who has, um, knowledge of the town, as the town administrator. He hasn't been the town administrator for years. There are other people who have been, who have not left under others' spite. And you haven't even had this contract reviewed by an attorney.
Thank you. Now, now, part of my response to that is that, or, so there is you made the same comment about Dusty that she was not qualified when her experience, I think, speaks for itself. And she has done a lot more than been given credit for and without even knowing or work, working with her personally. So it's really easy to lead yourself into what I would say uh, uh, you know, for any of us, a slander scene by making a comment that we don't know the facts of. So that would end that discussion for me, but any further discussion? Hearing none, I would ask for a vote.
Dusty, please. Dusty, Donald?
Yeah.
Dusty, Solomon?
Yes.
Dusty, Friday?
Yes.
Our, our mayor vote.
Yes.
What was it about?
Something I've been talking about. There's one more dimension to you. What I know was a concern that was sort of financial condition of the town, finding that it's under review anything and basically would slander or mention to you about fund balances, pretty close to accurate. Um, I would, uh, point out a little bit concerned. Haven't had enough time to really look and see exactly what's going on with it. Twenty-three audit showed good funds, solid, three, three million five in general fund. Um, stretch my head a little bit because each one of the funds in twenty-five, twenty twenty-five shows expenditures of fund balances. And I, you know, so so how you were able to build fund balances over the last several years, when the one-year permanent is spends fund bound? There's absolutely nothing wrong with that. Um, but I, you know, like, look at it, but I wanted to mention that to you because I've heard some concerns, uh, in various, uh, you many things financially were not what they ought to be. I think they probably uh, and I, and I can tell you, I haven't seen, I haven't seen anything that really upset me or anything. And that I wouldn't have done that, I mean, the other way it was done was wrong. Okay? Um, you adjusted that out of that contract and they should have been done. I won't see you think that's what I want to do. To get something before the board and one member doesn't understand or particularly like it and discuss it, if you agree then come over to the second and amend it. It's, I tell you, you ought to be doing business all the time. Uh, yeah, maybe. Um, at any rate, the really, uh, basic stuff, simple stuff that I want to talk to you about is for a minute. Um, I found out the hard way that, uh, the mayor, for instance, the mayor did not have access to the town hall. And I think that should be changed. Just a little thing, but to the people, there may be, he may go a year and not have any anybody that wants to meet with the mayor. You might go tomorrow afternoon or Sunday afternoon and somebody does want to do that, and the mayor shouldn't feel like he has to meet him in his house with people or what have you. And so that's one of the things, immediately change, give the mayor access to the town hall. Um, another thing that's just keeping my problem. There's a core request that I had in my hand here uh, from a board member from, for a number of, like, some kind of, some of them complicated. It really bring up um, a much bigger matter. You you sort of need a, uh, uh, new compo- compilation analysis on your water rights. Uh, I would just say today, by the way, on your waters, when, a long time ago, I had the last of your absolute, or your conditional rights made absolute. So I don't believe that town's in danger of, uh, losing water rights by token of abandonment. I think they've shown use, but I need to talk to the right people to find out about that and make sure that that's correct. But at any rate, the, with the board's quicken, I'm gonna give the board member a check back to her because you shouldn't be treating each other like this. Whatever My question, yeah, for public reference, you didn't charge it for the pledge? Did it? Come up the audit. Please don't do this and tell me that it's all right. Give her the check back.
I'm more than happy to give her a check back. I think any one of us that.
So have questions, be able to ask a question and not have to get paid or heard for it.
There were no accusations made. They were simply questions and information. Well, together for e- educational, so.
People got mad and said things happened. Let's move away from that. Um, but in a record request, you know, the sunshine law is. It's written specifically to help you, to help people with the um. Openness of government. And I, if anything, this one, this, this was more open than it would likely be. It seemed like stuff that's wired. Zoom could happen in town. I'll be all over town for five seconds and compliments is zoom. I'm sure that's what's happening. And that's a good thing. I mean, um, so why you would, you don't want to put. Things in the way of people being able to. Get the record seen. If they come in and the law has always been like this, I don't know that it's, whether it's been amended. Maybe it had. You know, you're bound by state law, whatever they do, whatever the state laws says. But uh. Somebody comes in after complicated stuff, some something that she asked for, you know, would take some work. Okay, well, you review that. We, people that would put together the information, the manager of the board, whomever. And say, you know, this is really gonna take some time. I estimate it'll take X hours, and so. If you want us to find this information for you, it's gonna cost X number of dollars. That's the way you ought to be treating people and. I think you ought to know that. I know, I know you're, I know all of you know that. Just think about it.
Can I interrupt you for just a second? Bill, Norman, have you seen the court request that Jessica submitted?
I haven't.
Do you know what he's talking about?
Yeah, I don't know. It's probably something I haven't seen.
Okay, you should be provided with a list. Bill, have you seen the list?
No.
Okay.
It was for, mostly for an up-to-date record of our water rights and to know that we were in good standing.
As, as Bruce indicated, it's, it's gonna require a great deal of work. Uh, research.
You know what she did, what she did basically for uh review of the town water. There's absolutely, we're not asked for that. Hey, that's fine. I uh, I don't think you have anything in jeopardy. But you want to see that.
So we just.
Nothing wrong with that.
So we just hired a, a water attorney, but that's if, if you needed to, you could contact the water attorney and say. We need it in black and white so that the whole border or the whole town is on the same page.
That's true.
You know, for, for the sunshine life, we need to post it on the, the town website, then so be it, and.
This, this information that the whole board want to see, and it hasn't been done, and I'm not sure that we ever. Put together or word like that. Um.
But you guys were filing.
Forget it would have been in the eight.
You were filing usage records every year.
I'm sorry?
You were filing usage records every year.
I still didn't get that.
Were you filing usage records every year?
Was it you or was it, was it the commissioner that was filing the usage records or showing that they were?
I, I, I need to track that down. I didn't know exactly what's there. It used to be that the uh water commissioner for this area. Uh, put that, put all that information in the same way that, by the way, they. Uh, soon the state engineer's office required the local water commissioners to put together. The water usage on each of their ditches and reservoirs and so forth. Uh, I haven't been here to see whether or not that's still going. Used to be Punch House would go in here in about February. And he'd want to know the usage for, you know, for each ditch, for each water break. And he'd fill out the form. That was what really ran things. Um, and maybe the state engineer's office isn't doing that anymore. But on the absolute water rights, as long as you continue to use them. It'd be violating information with the state engineer's office of how much water you're using to prove continued use of that right. But I don't know exactly how that is done these days.
Yeah, I know at some point in time, just like. Going digitized, it used to be done manually and then uh. Bunch had to set up an office in his home where he had to convert and put everything over from paper to the computer. So.
It's still how it's done. So what happened is I read the expenditures and I thought last year that they were charging. We were charging ourselves eighteen hundred dollars a month to water Terrell Park with municipal water. And I asked why we weren't using ditch water. Long answer. And I, I wanted to go back to irrigation water. Well, come to find out, um, nobody knows where we are with our water rights and Mike had been flood irrigating the. South side of the park and the parking lot with irrigation water until somebody diverted the irrigation water last year. And so in order to undivert it, we had to find out if we even had water rights and we were being advised by a citizen, we have no water rights anymore. They were abandoned. But nobody has any written, then this is what got me asking about our water rights and nobody has an answer. And I guess the attorney, they did contact the old water attorney and he gave an answer, but he said that was attorney-client privileged information. If we were filing.
I have no idea why. Any attorney would have said that to the people that he worked for.
Well, so our attorney.
He, the attorneys, the water attorney, the town attorney, they work for you.
Yeah.
They usually often communicate through the manager or the clerk or whomever typically does that. You're the client.
Yeah.
Not the staff.
So he did submit and allowed them to share that with me, a list of our water rights, but they would not submit. As far as current filings with the state, that was attorney-client.
There, there are none. There's a, the, once the water rights are absolute, the town doesn't have to. You, what you're begging of is the diligence uh quadrant.
Yes.
Filings for conditional rights.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in order to keep the conditional right alive, you have to keep those filings current. On absolute rights. That's all what you need to show is use is just.
Right.
Uh, and you need to do that. And you need to use, fully use the right at least one year in ten to avoid abandonment. For somebody to, for instance, take the, take that water away from you, they'd have to go to water port and. Prove that you had abandoned, that you had not used.
Well, there's.
Right in ten years.
It sounds like there's a huge chance that nobody's filed for years, any water usage. We, I, I don't know.
I.
Nobody has.
This sounds to me like some, somebody told you things that aren't necessarily accurate. Uh, the mayor told me that there was some comment about. The round changed hands, the town couldn't go to the head gate and all that ones. Colorado constitution specifically said exactly the office.
Well, we don't want to go grab our water if it's been abandoned.
If it's, they have to, would have to go to water port and prove abandonment.
Well, that's confidential.
And that wouldn't get them the whole way there.
Yeah.
The entire Colorado lower basin is over appropriate. There's more paper water rights than there is water to fill with anyways. So somebody filing for abandonment on somebody else's water right, that wouldn't get this last guy in line of water. That would get the next senior one in line of water. So it really wouldn't get you anywhere. So I don't, I don't know why anybody would go to the expense of doing that. You know, the, well, I'm gonna tell you about somebody else.
Anyway.
I don't, I don't think that you've got a huge problem there. I may, I may be wrong, but um. I want to look into that and.
We appreciate you.
Maybe run out of stuff and try.
Well, the, the.
And if I am, I'll tell you.
Yeah, the, the important part or his point was that none of the water was adjudicated, and he was right, adjudicated to each. Individual lot when the subdivision was made. That's why Classy Terrell donated those water rights that came with Terrell subdivision. To the town and then was changed to, like you say, absolute. Uh.
Yeah, the, the water right actually goes to point of diversion. You're talking about Fitzpatrick, right?
Right.
Oh, I don't remember where it is, but there's a head game.
Right.
The water, the water right goes to that head game. The state and the water, usually the water rights, often the water rights don't say. Who owns what from there? Sometimes they do. They will say the number one right out of there is a five-second feet out of, say, twenty or something, just for. Discussion purposes. So the guy with the number one water right, he gets his. He gets his five-second feet after his, he's poor. If there's more water in the ditch, then the guy with the second priority out of the ditch, he gets his water. And so on down the line. Some ditches will not show individual having higher priority in the ditch than others. And I, you know, I don't recall who Fitzpatrick is. And, and by the way, a lot of times, at least in the old days, and I think probably still more, water is conveyed by quick claim deed. Okay, so. You know, the, like. If you're looking for like a deed that says the piece of paper that says, you know, state of Colorado, you know, uh, recognizes that town Culver has uh. Hmm, five-second feet of water at the municipal spring number one. You're not gonna find that. There is no such.
No, and they were, they did give me the um list and I was able to contact the state with that list, but. They don't help a lot. They tell you how to look it up on the internet and.
See, I'll, I'll do that for you. I, I just haven't.
Yeah.
I haven't done that far.
I spent some time on it.
And I uh. Campbell had, Campbell had the question about the, it's in the state constitution. It took me an hour. Actually, it took him a little longer than that because I thought it was in law. Instead of in the constitution. So, but uh, so he's the mayor and he went first. That's how it's gonna be, you know? But so. Try to take care of all your, you know, you want, especially this information you want is the kind of thing that. Towns have water rights studies and water usage studies and firm yield reports. And Culver hasn't needed that because they've had good, solid water rights, most of which were absolute. The last two of them, I believe that. Uh. Me and Jim Lock had did in nineteen eighty-something.
Well, did you read the twenty twenty asset report?
The who?
Twenty twenty asset report. It was a list of all the assets of town.
I haven't seen that.
Water rights weren't listed in it.
They're, they're, that's out there somewhere, but I don't know where it is. Does the auditor need that?
Yeah.
Those.
It's a good read. You should read it.
In, in my perspective, it's just part of the foundation of the town, just like sewer, water, streets. Uh, law enforcement and then the administration or staff. And then, like I said. The board, so that we can support the staff and keep the town safe and. Whatever going. I mean, the, the, the town's gonna grow one way or the other, just like they did the subdivision up there. In my opinion, they didn't do it correctly, but. It is what it is. Um. So. We just need to move forward and, and take care of the foundation of the town, whether it's. Of, of, of the building or the, the, the town itself.
Assets.
I, I just think that that's part of the foundation of the town, the water rights, the sewer, whatever's coming up, whatever we're gonna do with the sewer plant, all of it.
Yes. Yes. And you're talking for reference. I want to go and uh, not, not go anywhere and do it. I wouldn't want to read the state law and see whether the sunshine law has changed. It could be that it changed, especially during COVID, they might have gotten, might have changed something. But basically, real basically speaking. Everything's public records. It personally outfiles. And the sales tax information, those are the two things that sometimes, fairly often, that people want to know. Specific information and both of them are um. Now they are not available to the party. The sales tax information isn't even available, individual sales tax information isn't available to the board. You know, like if you come over and say, oh, the total sales and um. Something in another store. You, you're not entitled to that.
You know, I think it is, the board would have access, say, if, say, we had a question and needed to go into executive session. For a personnel discussion or personnel file.
An executive session, that's right, with the employee.
With the employee, they, so that they have the opportunity to. Bring out their perspective or their, their defense or whatever. If we don't give them that opportunity, then as a board, we're breaking the law, is that?
Unless it's an ex-employee.
Wha- what about ex-employees?
About what?
Ex- employees from the past.
Oh, from the past? I would, the town should keep them, but those records should be sealed. And the reason that you keep them in case something came up, you know, like, um, so. The court of proceeding might need them. That's why I would keep them, if I were you. They don't rely on people walking in off the street, talking crap about something that happened twenty years ago, and they don't know anything of what they're talking about.
Or they haven't even lived here for that long or been on the board too. You know, it's not in. Black and white or there's a, a, a record of it, but that's the trouble. But like you said, there's been a lot of stuff said. Feelings made, whatever, without. The evidence or the proof or whatever. Man, it's, it's most definitely not the same town that I raised my kids in uh now, but. And there were times in the past that you and I disagreed, but at the same time, I had the, the respect and. I guess I would apologize for anything that I said that would have been offensive to you.
You haven't. I don't get crap. I don't care. I'd be lying if I didn't say that, but uh. Things happen. It's basically that stuff went back to.
That's life.
If it was one person more than anybody, uh, there wouldn't have been. There's problems that there were. There are always people in the valley that hate my guts for one, one reason or another, and yeah.
They do.
You know what I say? One of the words begins with kiss. You know, and they would say the same to me.
I've been there. Oh, I've just.
Don't worry about it. Don't worry about it. It's, it's over. And I mean, we don't need to badmouth the former staff and I don't mean, and I mean, we just don't need to do that. Let's just move ahead. And a lot of the stuff that I've seen, what's with, they did a good job.
Well, I've heard good things about you. I've heard good things about you. You know?
I know about your past.
A little bit. Well, I said that's facts, but I also know that I've listened to people and they've commented when you were here, you did help the general. And you know, that's what I'm, I'm going up there, what people are saying, plus your experience and your knowledge and I think you're working, you're doing a good job and you're willing to help us out. And that's all I need.
I would, I'd like to help you if things get ugly over me. The solution is for me to just get out of the way. You got a lot of you know, we're not going to do that. I'm not going to do that and you're going to want any solutions. Don't worry about it. We'll do as much as I can, as quick as we can. Um, that goes back a lot. One of the things I need to ask about that you can't put together a job description if I don't know what the title is. What's the title? You want town manager? You want town administrator?
Administrator.
In the code, it says administrator. There's no use of the word managers, administrator. And we do have a government.
And they, I think, see, they mean the same. In most towns, they mean the same in, in my mind, and you're right, the ordinances. The word is always administrator. It started that way with the contract between Culver and Debeck. The job was called town administrator. So we'll stick with that if that's what you want.
Yeah.
Um.
And I just really hope, you know, with your experience, that the sooner we vet and hire a full-time administrator, the better off we are.
That's right. The sooner you get me out of here, the better. Um. That, that'll do.
The, the same thing as far as, uh, job description or title. Uh, assistant. For you, do you want that to include, uh, deputy clerk? In the title or to, or, or executive assistant to be trained as a, as a deputy clerk?
I think you could do an administrative assistant deputy clerk.
Clerk.
Um, deputy clerk that way.
As the deputy clerk, not the assistant.
They can start, um, learning and taking up on that where
And being cross-trained, but hitting.
Yeah, I don't see an issue with it. I'm not huge into dividing I care what the title is. Um, but I think to roll into responsibilities of that stepping into that clerk's role when she isn't available or can't do it is a great which I can fill that gap.
Mm-hmm.
If I'm not around, or the clerk in general, not just me, but a clerk in general. Who would want to be able to fill that gap? In case that person can't act.
So you're taking vacation, aren't you? What's that?
Okay.
Will? Future board meetings? So our next board meeting is the first, first Tuesday of June?
Nine? The ninth?
That doesn't, that doesn't sound like a first
It's the third.
Third.
One of them is three.
Six. Oh, that's me.
So there's three. The next one.
Okay. Unless there's anything else, we'll adjourn. Spoke on the agenda for a little bit?
Yes.